Three, two, one.
And good morning, all the viewers joining us. This is August 19th, 2020. And this is the Thurston County Commissioner's briefing, put on by C P, Community Planning and Economic Development, and about water availability and stream flow restoration. Oh, why Ri, why Ra? And so I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. Also present is Commissioner Ty Mensah and County Manager Ramiro Chavez. We also have Josh Cummings with us today, or no?
No, he, no, he's not.
Okay. So we have Jennifer Davis, our Community Planning Manager, and Caitlin Nelson, Associate Planner. And who, am I missing somebody, Ramiro?
Well, I think you, you covered all.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you wish to join us via conference call and listen in, the phone number is three six zero, two five two, nine zero two zero, and the PIN number is one, two, three, four. This is a one-hour briefing. And let me see, what else do I need? I think that's it. We're gonna jump right in. And Jennifer, take it away.
Sure, it's gonna be Associate Planner Caitlin Nelson's show today, but I'd like to introduce the topic, as you know, because of your past experience with water resource inventory area planning. If you'll recall, the successful adoption of the Nisqually Plan in, I believe it was 2019, and Kate will talk about that. There's more plans coming down the pipe for you, and we're gonna, we have a series of briefings scheduled for you. This is the first of three briefings that are on your calendar, taking us through the fall to go over, to remind us all what RIAAs or WIAAs, or however people want to say them, are all about, and what these plans are all about, and then what will be coming to you later in the year for approvals and early next year. So Kate's gonna take it away and run through a PowerPoint, and I'll let her have it.
Okay, thank you. See? I am doing a share screen for the first time, so... Okay. Everybody sees this?
Yep, you got it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I've been working on water availability planning for the last year and a half with the county since I started, so I'm very excited to talk to you about it. I'm going to be going over the what, how, and why of water availability planning, and the benefits for the county's participation, and what will be happening next. So like you said, a RIA, also called a WIRA, is a water resource inventory area. They were formalized in 1971 as planning areas guided by existing watershed geography. There are 62 RIAAs in the state, and five of them extend into Thurston County, including Nisqually, Deschutes, Kennedy Goldsboro, and the Upper Chehalis and the Lower Chehalis. A grant from Ecology is funding the county's participation, my participation, in the Stream Flow Restoration Act process from 2018 until 2021. And the county is a member of four different planning units because the Chehalis Upper and Lower is combined into one with the Chehalis Basin Partnership. And we are participating to write plans for each RIA that identifies goals and actions to offset the impact of permanent exempt wells over the next 20 years. And just as a reminder, permanent exempt wells are a water use that does not require obtaining a water right, like Group A and B water systems. So when we talk about permanent exempt wells, we're usually talking about independent homeowners that drill their own wells. As Jennifer mentioned, Thurston County was a key player in drafting the Nisqually Plan Addendum. And it's an addendum because they already had a plan through a different planning process from a couple of years ago. Well, a while ago. But the addendum was to address the Stream Flow Restoration Act that was added on top of work for them to do. It was approved in early 2019, and it was the first plan to be approved under the Stream Flow Restoration Act. So it was kind of a big deal, it was very exciting. Okay. The three plans currently being drafted are the Deschutes, Kennedy Goldsboro, and Chehalis. The Deschutes and Kennedy Goldsboro Plans did not have an existing group or an existing plan that met regularly. So both are being chaired by Ecology, who is also providing a facilitator and some consultant time to help us get through the planning process. Both plans have an approval deadline of June 30th, 2021, with some goals to get it done much earlier than that so that we have a lot of time to go over that draft language before trying to take a vote on it. For the Chehalis Plan Addendum, it's being led by the Chehalis Basin Partnership, who has been meeting for years and has a process in place, and has been great to work with. But they have a deadline of February 2021. And when I say a deadline, that's the deadline for Ecology to approve it. So we are actually aiming to have it submitted much, with much more time beforehand so that Ecology can dedicate more time to look into it and review it before the state mandate for them to approve it. So in 2016, a Supreme Court decision, otherwise known as the Hearst Decision, determined that counties were required to make an independent decision of water availability for permanent exempt wells. This created a lot of uncertainty for the counties. They weren't, not only Thurston County, but other counties were not really sure about how to proceed with that. It's a complicated process. So in 2018, the Stream Flow Restoration Act, otherwise known as the Hearst Fix, clarified that decision, requiring that counties charge a $500 fee for new wells or connections to new wells, which $150 is kept by the county, and $350 is provided to Ecology for work in that RIA. On top of that, we are required to record restrictions on, well, required that property owners record restrictions on their property related to the withdrawal rates that are in the state code. So that's already determined. We just have to make sure that they are actually reporting it on their property. And then we are required to participate in the planning units to draft and adopt a long-term plan. Each plan includes an estimate of the amount of water used by permanent exempt wells in the RIA over the next 20 years. We're required to determine a list of potential projects that could provide a direct water offset to that amount of water that we're expecting to be consumed in the next 20 years. And then we are required to provide information on a net ecological benefit, which is essentially just all the other pieces of the planning process that include a habitat benefit or our policies and actions that we could take to improve our stream flow outside of just direct water, water availability. Though, planning units include members of other counties, cities, tribes, and other organizations. And the way that the process is set up at the moment is that there are mostly voting members on each planning unit. There are some people that are there for input but don't have a vote. And each planning unit has agreed, for our county, to have a consensus decision met in order to have approved, a plan that we would approve and then send to Ecology for their approval. There are several benefits to the county for participating in these planning units and for drafting a plan. On top of the fact that we're building relationships with other jurisdictions and organizations and the tribes, we would also be avoiding rulemaking, which I'll talk about a little bit later. But it also increases the priority of Ecology's grant funds to have an approved plan and to have the project that we're applying for listed in the plan. We submitted two grant proposals for the 2020 Grant Round that we're waiting to hear back on, that we're very excited for, because they're for the Nisqually Plan, which at the time of the grant proposal was the only plan that had been submitted at the time. So we're hoping that we got a couple more points for that one. The plan also addresses a combination of water quantity and quality issues, often expanding into work that the Public Works Department and our Health Department does. So it allows us to work together. There are a range of different project types that are included in the plan. It goes from purchasing water rights outright to just providing habitat projects in certain areas. And for each project type, some of them are very detailed. Some of them are projects that another organization has put together that they have already designed. But some of them are just conceptual, where we say, okay, here's an area where we could do a managed aquifer recharge project, or we could do a source switch, or something like that. And then the hope would be that it's so high-level that then, when the grant funds come around, they are also funding feasibility studies. And so they would then be able to go through, and we could actually start looking at direct properties and locations to do those types of projects that we're interested in completing. This is...
Caitlin, Caitlin?
Yes.
There's no page number, so I want to back up to the previous slides so I don't forget.
Okay.
The top right, where is that?
I could not tell you, actually. I got that from, I got that from Amy Hatchwinica with the Salmon Lead Entity, so I know that it is... I know it's a project, I just don't recall which one at the moment. But I can find out for you.
It's in Thurston County?
I'm not sure.
I don't know. I just, it was, it's unique, and I loved it, wanted to find out where it was. So I don't, you don't need to start researching.
Okay, you know, it's an example of what kind of thing we would like to do. We would like to be able to provide benefits to wetlands and do some stream reconnectivity. So that's an example of what we're hoping to do.
Yeah, it's a cool photo, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so this is an example of a project that was completed recently, known as the Albany Street Pond, Stormwater Pond, or the Rochester Pond. Both names are used generally. We have a before and after photo here. And this was a project that was applied for, by the Public Works Department, in the first Stream Flow Restoration Grant Round in 2018, and was fully funded. This is a great indicator that there will be crossover into other projects that we're doing, that other projects on the CIP that could be funded, projects on the HCP could be funded, that we could expand projects that other organizations are working on, like, or, okay, also the culvert removal projects. That's another one that we're looking at, where can we expand habitat in an area where a culvert, a culvert will be removed? But as another example, it could be like, a land trust is buying property, and we see an opportunity to do improvements with a grant or a conservation district. So it was a really good, really good test. The failure to adopt a RIA Plan would go through rulemaking, which I mentioned before. It could be, we could get all the way through drafting a plan, and maybe we're not coming to an agreement. And because we have to come to an agreement, we wouldn't be able to submit our plan. So we do have some incentive to work with the other organizations to come up with a plan that we all agree on. But as a concept, rulemaking is not detrimental. It is the process that Ecology goes through to adopt restrictions into the state code. That can involve some of these things that I listed, like the maximum daily withdrawal rate, metering fees, further restrictions on droughts. As a concept, it's not detrimental, but it takes the input away from the county as a more top-down approach, instead of allowing us to make suggestions and to propose our own actions with the other organizations and jurisdictions. So that is one negative outcome. The timeline for this is we have the Chehalis Plan, which is coming up first, that we are hoping to, the Chehalis Basin Partnership is hoping to get an approved vote to be able to submit to Ecology by the end of October. So it is on a little bit of a fast track here, but it's not as detailed as some of the other plans because they already have an existing plan. So the addendum is mostly just going to cover what that 20-year offset is and some immediate projects we could go over. The Deschutes and Kennedy Goldsboro Plans, while they have goals to get it done and drafted much earlier, we probably won't be coming back for a decision on it until January or February for our vote within the planning unit. On September 9th is when I am hoping to bring the Chehalis Plan. The, I changed this from your, from your handout because I had the wrong date on it. So September 16th will be the next one that we would do after September 9th. I am hoping to go over some of the items in the Deschutes and the Kennedy Goldsboro Plans, but that time could also be to further discuss the Chehalis Plan Addendum if we still have items that we'd like to discuss. But for that next Chehalis Plan meeting, I am probably hoping to get a preliminary decision on your feelings towards the plan because most likely what we'll end up doing is you will have a preliminary decision, and then we will go and we'll vote at the Chehalis Basin Partnership, and then it will be adopted by the county after the fact. We could choose to do that before we vote, but I guess I will leave that up to you. And do you have any questions?
Yeah, that was 17 minutes, and we're scheduled for an hour.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think I was expecting...
Robust discussion.
Possibly, but now that I'm going through it, I think I realized that maybe that wasn't necessary.
That's fine. Commissioner Mensah, I bet you have something to say.
Yes, thank you. So I'm, you know, obviously I'm tracking Chehalis because I'm sitting on the Basin Partnership, but I know nothing about the others. So that's what my interest is in, kind of what's going on with the Deschutes and Kennedy Goldsboro. The timelines you have show those together? Is that, I mean, can you explain more about, are they working together? Are those two separate groups with separate plans that just happen to have the same timeline, or?
Yeah, so they, they were both given the same timeline. Generally, different RIAAs in the state have had, I want to say, three or four different timelines. Nisqually and Nuxack were on the same timeline as, they were the only two RIAAs that had that timeline to be approved back in, at the end of 2018. And then Deschutes and Kennedy Goldsboro just happened to be similar. They don't have a plan that's existing. They don't have a group that meets regularly. And so they just, they just happened to have the same timeline versus Chehalis, which has a plan, but it was under, it was created under different circumstances than the Nisqually and the Nuxack plans. So that's why they're a little bit sooner, as well as because they already have a plan. But the groups are a little different, but they overlap a little bit as well. So Ecology is working on both the Deschutes and the Kennedy Goldsboro with us. We have the Squawson Island Tribe that is both heavily involved in the Kennedy Goldsboro and the Deschutes Plans. And they are a really key participant. So that's guiding that in a very different process than what you're used to in the Chehalis Plan. We are going over quite a few more policy considerations, some adaptive management, where we would say, okay, how do we look back at this in five years and decide whether or not we're meeting our goals? And what kind of actions do we want to make if we're not doing that? Like, do we want to go back to the board for each of our individual jurisdictions and say, okay, we are not providing projects as quickly as we wanted to. We are growing faster than we expected to. Our water availability is lowering at a faster rate than we had hoped. What do we do? And so we are looking into more details on what options could be to continue that process on our own. And things like, you know, since the Chehalis Basin Partnership that already exists in Chehalis, part of the discussion in Deschutes and Kennedy Goldsboro is, okay, how are these plans going to continue? How are we going to implement these? How are we going to continue to work together if we don't have an organization already set up? So that's part of the proposals in Deschutes and Kennedy Goldsboro for each of them. It's easier in Deschutes, I think. And, well, we have a very different relationship because in Deschutes, we are the main county. There's Lewis County, but they're not expecting any growth in the area that they extend into the RIA. It's mostly just forest land. So we definitely have a very strong lead in Deschutes versus Kennedy Goldsboro, where it's just that small sliver on the top there. So it's more of Mason County's approach, and...
Steamboat Island isn't a sliver, come on, Caitlin.
It's a sliver compared to Deschutes and Chehalis.
The real sliver is lower Chehalis. I really like this map, I actually pulled it out. And it's great to see in color all the different RIAAs in Thurston County. Though that, this is really useful. But with Kennedy Goldsboro, for example, you don't, you know, then, then what's left out is like, well, where does it? Obviously, we're just a small piece. Is it, is the, how big is that RIA? And I assume there's a massive chunk in Mason County?
Yes, yeah.
Can you back the, Kate, can you back this slide up to that map so we can all see it on the screen? Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah. I definitely, that's a good idea. I will put together a map that shows the RIA extended outside of the county because, like, Chehalis is the perfect example, which I'm sure you're familiar with, which, you know, it's two RIAAs. It's huge, it goes all the way to ocean shores. This is such a tiny portion of the RIA, even though it takes up half of our county. But I'd say that Kennedy Goldsboro isn't a very big RIA. It is just us in Mason County. So it doesn't extend much further than that. It does also involve the Stokomish Tribe. And so they are also participating with the Squawson Tribe. But it is mostly, I'd say, Mason and Squawson taking the lead on that one. But we do have, what was that?
Oh, sorry, was there a lot of development, like, planned for that RIA? Just, I mean, is it Shelton, incorporates Shelton and the developed areas of Mason County?
It does. And Shelton does seem to rely on permanent exempt wells more than we had expected. But to be honest, most of the growth is probably in Thurston County. There just isn't really a lot of room for us to do many offset projects in our county because of the development. Also, the fact that a lot of it is probably not going to be helpful because of the interaction with the seawater. I'm probably, I'm not going to get into the science of that right now, but there's not a lot that we can do in Thurston County at the moment other than support the others in that area.
For RIA 14, you're talking about?
Yes, for RIA 14.
Okay, I'll let my seatmates take shot.
Thank you. I just want to be, I want to, I know, understand this, but I want to understand it completely. I want the audience to understand it. Without our, completing our plan, we are susceptible to Ecology making rules that may be more restrictive.
Yes.
And so if we have the Upper Chehalis, and it extends into Thurston, or into Lewis County, if we don't have a plan, if we have a plan, but Lewis doesn't, does Ecology step in and make a plan for the entire RIA, or?
Well, so it's one plan that we are writing with the other counties, and we have to all vote on it in order to even submit it to Ecology. Ecology won't approve it for our county if the other counties do not approve it for themselves.
Okay, thank you.
So in, it's a little different for each one. In Kennedy Goldsboro and Deschutes, if we do not have a plan that we come to a consensus agreement on, Ecology is supposed to then take it and finish writing it based on the work that we have done now. But then they would also imply those, apply those restrictions on top of that.
Okay, thank you. So it's not jurisdiction-specific, it's one, one big plan.
Right. And Nuxack is an example of that because they were under the same requirements of Nisqually, but they did not come to an agreement. And so Ecology went to rulemaking and made some changes. A lot of it is still unknown because they left the door open a little bit to say that they could further restrict things, they could further implement things. But we still don't entirely know what it looks like.
Okay, and sometime in 2021, our plan will be complete?
Hopefully, it will be approved in 2021.
2021, okay, good.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Go ahead, Ty.
No, good.
Well, that's it then. I have no other questions.
Commissioner Edwards?
How about, can I throw in a couple things?
Commissioner Edwards has some questions.
Oh, I had no idea he was here. Go ahead.
I, I believe he, okay.
I'm just hiding in the background here. I guess I could have dropped my hat down in front of you. As you were discussing this up until the point we're at today, did you talk about in-stream flow and how much effects it has? And maybe trees, how much trees draw it down or don't draw down in-stream flow, or septic recharge? Did all those issues, were they discussed as far as, I don't know, I guess factual issues of water usage and retention and... and saving water and all that?
Yeah, definitely. Those are all aspects that we consider. Some of those are potential projects where... Or they could affect how we're doing our calculations. So there could be some community forest projects. There could be some where we are considering looking into what changes to forestry practices are. There could be some that are related to... Well, as an example, some of the projects where we are getting people off of septic and onto sewer actually affects the recharge rate. So we are actually possibly removing water from the stream by getting people onto sewer, but it can be improving the water quality. So it's something that we have to analyze as removing a water quantity benefit but adding to a water quality benefit. And all of those things are considered in different parts of the plan, yes.
Was water quality a big piece of this along with quantity?
It is definitely something that is a concern for different members. The main focus of this is anything that we can get a direct water benefit is the number-one priority, and then water quality is sort of secondary to that. So we want to focus on what will be getting direct water to the stream, either by buying water rights or by doing a, maybe an aquifer recharge project where we're taking water from one location that's being used and trying to make sure that it is slowly dissolved. Well, slowly goes back into the aquifer, like that storm flow, or stormwater project, like I mentioned for the Albany Pond. That's a good example of that. The habitat projects, things like, like doing new plantings and doing habitat improvements, those are still in the plan, but they're identified as secondary. They might not get funding as a priority, they may get some leftover. That goes more towards improving the basin in general, but maybe would not be our main goal. So in short, yes, it is still something that we consider and consider it as a priority as our individual organizations, but for this planning purpose, it's secondary.
Was there participation during this with the, like, the Forest Practice Board? I mean, kind of where I'm going about this is I've kind of had heartburn about commercial application of fertilizer in the forests that usually are the headwaters of a lot of our waters. And I just wonder if that came into the discussion at all as this was worked on?
That specifically, I would say, did not. But forest practices in general have been identified as something that we want to work towards. We have had some participation from forestry property owners like Warehouser and Green Diamond. But from that board, no. It might be something that these planning units may want to revisit in the future, though.
Okay, well, look forward to some more discussion on it, possibly. Thank you.
Anything more, Ty?
I can't, I can't think of anything.
Okay, well, Caitlin and Jennifer, thank you very much for this informative briefing. And we look forward to seeing you in a couple, well, next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, bye-bye.
Mr. Chair, did I overhear that we're staying on the same Zoom for the next briefing?
If it was going to go to an hour, they'd be backing up against each other, and we would have stayed on the same Zoom, but...
Okay, but not now.
Megan's going to shut it down now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.